Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Ms. Jameson, all members are present with the exception of Mrs. Luckinbill, who will join us in a moment. While we are waiting, could we please have a moment of silence? Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Presentation and recognitions, the V S B A Academy Awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Bradts, members of the board. I'm here tonight to celebrate you, to present the Virginia School Board Association Academy Awards. The Virginia Standards of Quality include a requirement for local school board member training, and credits earned through the V S B A School Board Academy fulfill this requirement. The awards are based on participation from July 1 to June 30, and the awards are presented annually to school board members who meet the requirements. The V S B A recognizes board members for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardmanship skills through the V S B A meetings, conferences, board development and training, and active involvement in the association. So there are five levels of awards, and we have, I think, someone in each one, so I'm going to go through all of them, and then I'll bring you your certificates. The first level is the Award of Recognition for 15 credits, and that goes to Ms. Smith. And then we have an Award of Achievement, which is 24 credits, and that certificate and bronze pin goes to Ms. Desalee. And the Award of Excellence for 48 credits in two years comes with a certificate and a silver pin for Dr. Bradts. And then the Award of Honor, which is 66 credits in two years, comes with a certificate and a gold pin for Ms. Burnett and Ms. Hutchins. And then the Award of Distinction, which is 84 credits in two years, comes with a certificate and a starfish pin for Ms. Baker and Ms. Brown. So congratulations.
Our next item will be our principal reports. Eastern View High School Principal Report, Dr. Bob.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Madam Chair, Dr. Bradts, thank you for having us tonight. We have a short little video that's going to highlight some of the successes that we have at Eastern View. But before we did that, I just wanted to take a moment to publicly acknowledge Don Bruner and his passing, and just kind of what he meant to Culpeper County, to me personally. When I was a very, very young rookie assistant principal, Don was one of the first people that I had the pleasure of supervising, and he literally would get behind any initiative that you had. All of a sudden, his department would be leading the charge within that, and everything you asked him to do was done well. And I don't think it's any secret that a lot of principals in this county and assistant principals all supervised him at one point. So just, as Eastern View, we'd like to offer acknowledgement to his family and friends.
Point of preference, Ms. Jameson, Ms. Luckinbill has joined the meeting.
Good morning, Eastern View. It's a great day to be a Cyclone. Welcome to our daily news.
Good evening, and welcome to the special edition of E V T V Live. I'm Caleb.
And I'm Manny. Welcome to your evening news.
Last year was pretty crazy. We started off the year with doing Lost Boys.
Yeah, and then we finished out with Cinderella. Man, that was a roller coaster.
Yeah, we had some highs, we had some lows.
Yeah, but Eastern View is definitely the place to be.
You know, this is starting to remind me of a show I've been watching.
What show?
It's called The Lederman Show. They always do these top 10 things. It's pretty interesting.
Hmm, top 10. We should do one.
Yeah, but what would we call it?
The Top 10 Reasons E V is the Place to Be in '23.
Number 10, our National Honor Society has sponsored 30 Angel Tree recipients this past holiday season.
That's a lot of wrapping paper. Number nine, we hosted two blood drives last year. The first we've hosted since before COVID. Between the two drives, we collected 65 pints, or units, of blood, which went on to help as many as 195 lives.
Number eight, Band Kids.
Number seven, you know that amazing mural you see when you come up Cyclone Way?
Yeah.
One side was painted by C C art students and the other side by Eastern View art students.
That's a heck of a collab. Number six, our F C C L A completed all seven national programs and earned the Gold Outstanding State Chapter Award.
Wow. Number five, have you seen the new and improved Academic Wall of Fame?
Yeah, I've seen a couple of our friends up there. Number four, if you haven't been to a Medford game, where are you at?
Number three, athletics. Played the district so many times, it was wicked, dawg.
Number two, our F F A was featured in a national commercial.
Whoa, that's so cool.
You have to show up every day, you have to put in the work. Whether you're a teacher, trucker, lawyer, farmer, musician, hard work pays dividends. Farmers, there's no calling in sick. And with most of the important things in life, you don't get a do-over.
And the number one reason, E V is the place to be, the wonderful people we work with
Teachers, thank you for all your work. Staff, thanks for doing what you do here to make this place run. What a great building it is to be in here at Eastern View. Hope everyone has a wonderful day today. Remember, be cool, behave, make it through the day, one block at a time, you'll be fine. And remember, it's a good opportunity to reset.
We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks for the lovely video. It spoke, a picture spoke a million words or a thousand words, whatever that expression is. Well done, thank you.
I especially enjoyed the intro. Was that with a drone that we own, or what, how did that?
That's a good question. I believe Bo did that for us.
Oh, very cool. Very cool.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Great job at Eastern View, all, staff, students, parents, everybody. It's a, it's a great place to be. It really is.
I'll just make a comment that I've already told you. I've been stopped by lots of parents that's actually in my district, so I'm just saying what good things are happening there and how appreciative they are, so thank you and good job.
Yeah, thanks for the feedback.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes, I'd like to add also that I've been told by many parents how much they appreciate your leadership, and how much they enjoy and are happy that their students are attending Eastern View. Thank you so much for your leadership.
That's very kind, thank you.
Nothing else can be said, Dr. Bob. You're the best.
I wouldn't go that far. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you to Eastern View and Dr. Bob. Our next report is the Culpeper County Public Schools Technical Education, C T E, report, and the Culpeper Technical Education Center, C T E, update from Mr. Shawn Somerscales.
As Ms. Singleton is passing out a few goodies for you, you know, in C T U, we like our goodies, so we have something for you, a few things to take away. Some things will make a little bit more sense as we go, and other things are just some fun things for you to take along with you.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Bradts, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be on tonight's agenda to provide an update on the successes of our division's career and technical education programs. I'm Shawn Somerscales, proud principal of the Culpeper Technical Education Center. Unfortunately, Randy is unable to be here this evening as she's recovering from a recent surgery. But assisting with tonight's presentation is Ms. Singleton, Ainsley Cockrell, I T L of the C T E Department at E V H S, and Beth Lane, I T L of the C T E Department at C C H S. In front of you are a few takeaways for this evening, one of which is a laminated copy of the first few pages of our C C P S C T E Resource Guide. This was a labor love over the course of the entire summer that leaked over into this fall, and will serve as a living document that will be continuously updated housing all things C T E. Our presentation tonight will largely follow this guide, and as we stand here tonight, I'm proud to say that our C T E programs are thriving, and the impact they are having on our students and our community is profound. First and foremost, I'd like to emphasize the dedicated efforts of our more than 60 C C P S staff members who are spread across six different schools diligently working to provide quality C T E programs to our students. These educators are the backbone of C T E, and their dedication to the success of our students is truly commendable. Our C T E programs may vary greatly in content, but they all share four essential key components. Here we go. These four components are what set C T E apart, and the reason we refer to C T E as the coolest thing in education. These components are competency-based instruction, industry credentials, high-quality work-based learning, and involvement in career and technical student organizations. As a reminder of the metaphor, we have provided each of you with your very own blue car to take home. Any service may be provided by Blazer Automotive at C T E. Competency-based instruction is the foundation of instruction in C T E classrooms. Different from standards of learning, S O Ls, competency-based instruction requires an educational approach that focuses on ensuring students acquire and can demonstrate specific skills and knowledge. Through task-based assessments, if you were to visit any of the C T E classrooms, you will see students are actively engaged in learning and assessed on their ability to perform specific tasks. Competency-based instruction requires our teachers to stay relevant with currently, current industry standards, be market-responsive where possible, and use their knowledge to create truly unique learning experiences based on real-world applications of performance tasks. Ms. Cockrell and Ms. Lane collaborate with each other and their own departments to provide one such opportunity we call the Reality Store. Ms. Cockrell?
Good evening. As educators, we constantly address misconceptions, one which revolves around the mistaken belief that we neglect teaching students about personal finance, covering topics like taxes, home buying, and budgeting. In reality, every student is required to successfully complete economics and personal finance for graduation. In addition, it offers students with the chance to pass the Wise Financial Literacy Test, an industry credential that meets the requirement for graduation. With over 160 competencies tailored to real-world scenarios for life after high school, the course explores diverse subjects including careers, trades, funding for college, and trade schools, insurance, and much more. Our approach is rooted in real-world understanding and practical application. An example of this approach is the Reality Store showcased in the video above. This community-supported event provides students with hands-on experiences, offering a practical glimpse into the monthly expenses they will encounter in the future. Armed with budgeting sheets that consider factors such as spouses, children, and individual salaries, students can calculate families' gross income, deduct taxes, and arrive combined monthly net income. They make deposits, allocate a mandated 10% into savings, and they address student loans before attending the Reality Store. This year, we enhance the lesson by hosting it at C T E, attended by both high schools in either the morning and afternoon sessions. Students are required to navigate various aspects of life, including housing, personal care, insurance, transportation, and much more. Optional tables for childcare, credit cards, and supplemental income add further layers to this lesson. An exciting addition this year was the Pet Adoption Center, where students were randomly chosen to adopt pets, which are the balloons you see in the video, introducing an extra expense for toys, food, and vet care. This exemplifies just one of the many instances where Culpeper County Public Schools' collaboration with the community sets us apart. The success of this event is owed to the dedication of 25 volunteers, including many of you here tonight, who generously devote an entire day to ensuring our students a memorable and enriching experience in competency-based instruction. We have a great appreciation for the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cockrell. And again, thank you to those of you who have volunteered at many of our events and been part of many of those programs, those real-life experiences for our students. Quality instruction via competency-based instruction in our classrooms leads to our second key component of C T E, industry credentials. Industry credentials are certifications or qualifications recognized by employers within a specific industry, and these credentials provide tangible proof of students' competence and readiness for employment. By earning industry credentials, our students gain a competitive edge in the job market, making them more attractive to potential employers and increasing their chances of success in their chosen career. As you can see from the list provided here in our resource guide, C C P S C T E courses offer an immense amount of opportunities for students to earn an industry credential. The credentials offered by C C P S range from occupational competency assessments, which we have listed there as Level 1, such as the Wise Financial Literacy Test, all the way up to state and federal licenses and certifications, such as the Virginia State Cosmetology License. As students engage in C T E programs during their academic journey, many will have the opportunity to earn multiple industry credentials, industry certifications. For example, a student may earn their AutoCAD certification as a sophomore, demonstrating their ability to read, analyze, and create architectural blueprints. Then as a junior, enter the H VAC and R program, where they would earn their N C C E R Core Construction and OSHA 10 certification. And finally, as a senior, for their H VAC 2, to earn their N C C E R Level 1 H VAC certification as well as their EPA 608 certification. The Department of Labor defines this as the opportunity to earn stackable credentials, or a sequence of credentials accumulated over time by an individual to help them move along a career pathway, or up a career ladder to potentially higher-paying jobs. Through effective academic and career planning with our counseling departments, C T E students will have, will leave high school not just with a diploma, but as a skilled scholar with a diploma and an industry credential as tangible proof of their career readiness. By the numbers, C C P S has shown an impressive level of success. In 21-22 school year, 1,456 industry certifications were earned by C C P S students, and in 22-23, 1,579 industry certifications were earned by C C P S students. Of those credentials, 90 were earned at C T E in our opening year, 21-22, and 185 were earned at C T E in our second year, 22-23. Our hope is to provide more opportunities for students to earn stackable credentials. Our newest C T E course is just an example of that. Medical Assistant, which offers students the potential to stack their Certified Medical Assistant certification with a Certified Nursing Assistant certification by the time they graduate. Similarly, when we look to the future, when we look to future programming, we plan to present options that create opportunities for more stackable credentials. In November, we will be proposing Firefighting 1 and 2 as an additional program of studies. The addition of this course offering would provide students with the chance to leave high school as a certified E M T, as well as Firefighter 1, 2, and Hazmat certifications. The combination of these industry certifications will make our graduates career-ready immediately upon graduation. While industry credentials may be what gets students' foot through the door, we know real-world experiences is often the greatest teacher. This brings us to our third component of C T E, high-quality work-based learning.
I'm excited to inform you about the strides we've made in providing high-quality work-based learning opportunities in Culpeper County. Recognized by the state of Virginia, there are 12 such opportunities, and I'm proud to share that we currently offer nine, with ongoing efforts to provide the remaining three. This provides students with the opportunity to gain experience in their career fields, build their resumes, and in most instances, earn a salary. These opportunities have led to full-time positions for our students, and even positions that have paid to further our students' educations at local schools such as Germana. In addition, specific high-quality work-based learning opportunities now count towards meeting the industry credential requirement for graduation. Culpeper is committed to ensuring that this opportunity is accessible to all C T E students in order to allow them to grow as individuals in their career path, and to provide our local businesses with more employable recent graduates. In addition, offering an alternative path for those who may find testing challenging. This initiative has been a particular benefit, I'm sorry, this initiative has been particularly beneficial for our students who can now earn credits through practical experiences showcasing their understanding in a manner beyond the traditional classroom setting. One example is Cooperative Education. This is our longest-standing, high-quality work-based learning, and this allows students enrolled in C T E-approved courses to receive credit for on-the-job training. Students, if their schedule permits, even have the opportunity to work during school hours. In recent years, we've expanded our offerings to include successful job shadowing, service learning, externships, including working in our cafeterias, school-based enterprise, and more that is outlined on the sheet above. Currently, the monitoring of these programs is handled by our dedicated teachers and overseen by myself and Beth Lane. We work closely with our director, principals, staff, students, and community members to ensure the success of these initiatives. Culpeper County is passionate about providing these opportunities, allowing our students to experience success in non-traditional classroom setting. To give you a firsthand perspective on the impact of the programs, I'd like to invite Merwin Thomas, a current senior at Eastern View High School, to share his experience
Good evening, esteemed members of the board. I stand before you with enthusiasm as I share my journey through my C T E courses at Eastern View High School and C T E. My name is Merwin Thomas, currently working towards graduation in my senior year. My first experience with career technical education began in my sophomore year with Mr. Duncan's Intro to Power class. In my junior year, I was led to Ms. Cockrell's Econ and Personal Finance class, which is a valuable course as required for graduation. It was here that I refined my essential skills, including interview techniques through my experiences like our mock interview lesson. Furthering my exploration, I signed up for cybersecurity under the guidance of Ms. McCurick at C T E. This opportunity led to my attendance at the 2023 Job Fair, where I had the privilege of meeting Schmung Contracting. Within two weeks, I had a successful interview. I secured a position with them, drawing upon the interview skills polished in my E P F class. Since I was able to secure a position as a result of the Job Fair, I had the opportunity to partake in the C T E Signing Day, where students are celebrated for their start to their careers. Building upon this, my current academic year involves a youth registered apprenticeship and co-op, which involves, which, excuse me, which allows me to receive credit for working. Both are high-quality work-based learning opportunities where I'm able to build my resume and receive additional credits. The work ethic that has been instilled in me by my family and refined through my workplace readiness skills I received in my C T E courses can be seen through my current, through my current schedule. My typical hours is at a report to work from 6:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., attend school, and then resume my job duties from 2:30 to 5:30 p.m. Currently, my plans are to attend college after graduation. However, Schmung Contracting is currently sending me to Germana for furthering my education and is covered by them. In addition, they have agreed to keep me employed during my summer and holiday breaks once I'm away for college. I have an appreciation for my C T E courses that allowed me to grow from intro courses to an employed student. I received many opportunities and community connections through my C T E courses. The workplace readiness skills and the high-quality work-based learning opportunities have been instrumental in shaping my current professional career, and I'm confident that the skills and knowledge I've acquired will serve as a solid foundation for my future endeavors. Thank you for your time and allow me to share my journey with you.
Thank you, Merwin. Merwin's just one of a few very successful examples of students getting real-world experience through high-quality work-based learning opportunities right here in our county. However, Merwin's experience is unique, as does one in which his employer, Schmung Contracting, as Merwin mentioned, is not only providing him with a paid job experience, but also with financial sponsoring of his academic advancement by paying for his heavy equipment operator courses at Germana Community College. Merwin is benefiting from a work-based learning program called Fast Forward. That was made available to high school students for the first time just last year. Merwin, along with two other C T E students, became the first high school students in the state of Virginia to actively participate in the Fast Forward program. Congratulations, Merwin. In essence, our C T E programs are not just about academic learning, but also about giving our students practical, industry-specific experiences that can lead to meaningful careers. We are proud to say that, like Merwin, many of our students who engage in work-based learning experiences earn the opportunity to continue employment after high school. Since 2021, we have celebrated 90 students who committed to their futures at our C T E Signing Day. In addition to providing students with real-world experiences and career opportunities, high-quality work-based learning experiences also offer a pathway to graduation. Beyond the 22 credits required for a standard diploma, V D O E also requires students to earn one of the following: an A P, Honors or Dual Enrollment Credit, or an industry credential, or complete a high-quality work-based learning experience. For some portions of our student population, passing an industry credential or an upper-level academic class like D E or A P may prove incredibly difficult. Recently, C T E and our Family Resource Center have collaborated with Career Partners, Inc. to design a pilot externship program targeted at our L population to address this exact issue. Our group of L student externs will be granted the opportunity to work directly with local business owners, be exposed to a potential career pathway, and check a box for graduation that would otherwise, may have otherwise been a bridge too far. I would like to thank our E V and C C administrators for supporting the concept, as well as the F R C and Career Partners for their continued support. We look forward to keeping you all posted on the successes of this pilot program. The fourth and final component of C T E are Career and Technical Student Organizations, or C T S Os. Career and technical student organizations like F F A, F C C L A, DECA, H O S A, Skills USA, and N T H S are co-curricular organizations that focus on celebrating, recognizing, and advancing the trades. At the macro level, they provide students with connections to national and international organizations, scholarships, leadership opportunities, and conferences that showcase students through competitive events. At the micro level, C T S Os are communities within our schools that connect students through common interests, and for some students... And for some students, a connection to their CTSO becomes their most memorable high school experience. And for others, it may be the very reason that that student chooses to come to school. CCPS CTSOs, sorry for the alphabet soup there, have been incredibly successful in recent years with our middle school and high school chapters of FFA, FCCLA, HOSA, and Skills USA being recognized at state and national competitions. These successes are due to the year-round, tireless efforts of our amazing teacher sponsors who organize, mentor, and guide our students through their experiences. Last year alone, over fifteen-hundred CCPS students engaged in a CTSO. Of those students, more than one hundred competed at the state or national level for their respective chapter, and brought home numerous accolades that have been recognized by this very board in the form of ZAP Awards. Again, thank you to our teacher sponsors for all you do to make CTSOs what they are. Our students aren't just taking CTE courses, they are excelling in them. CCPS CTE programs are thriving, thanks to the dedication of our staff and the emphasis we place on competency-based instruction, industry credentials, high-quality work-based learning, and career and technical student organizations. Behind me, or in front of you, is a list of the extensive CTE programming we actively have happening here in CCPS. These programs are essential in preparing our students for the workforce and providing them with the skills and knowledge they need to succeed. As we move forward, we are committed to ensuring that all four components of CTE, like the wheels of your car, remain in good working order to help our students reach their destination to a bright and prosperous future. Madam Chair, Dr. Bradz, members of the board, thank you for your continued support of our CTE programs and your dedication to the success of our students and community. Together, we are shaping the future of Culpeper County as they choose to seize opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summerscales. Is there any questions for Mr. Summerscales before he leaves? No statements, anything, anyone?
Yes. Many, many years ago, when this building and this program was just a dream, it's so fulfilling to see what it has blossomed into, and how many students' lives have been changed by this program. And it's due to all of those folks out there who have made it happen, who have put it together, who spend countless hours in providing the opportunities for our kids to advance. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Smith?
Simply that I agree with that. How could we not? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Summerscales, thank you and your entire staff. And Ms. Luckinville?
I was just going to give credit to the young man, Mr. Thomas, I think. Thank you. Your presentation was spectacular and spoke volumes about what you have done and what other students can do at CTEC. It was much appreciated.
Ms. Desalee?
I also wanted to just say thank you. I recently had the honor to tour around with Randy and Ainsley and, you know, watch some classes and things in progress, and it was amazing. And then seeing this all finished up today is really exciting, and I just can't say thank you enough. And I'm so impressed with our program, and I know there's all kinds of employers out there that will be eager to hire students, Merwin, and many more behind him in the program. I don't know how you get it all done in the course of a day, and thank you so much.
I have something.
Ms. Brown?
Kudos to everybody. I agree with everything that's been said here. The other thing is I am very happy to see fire science being added to the programs at CTEC. We have an incredible fire departments in this county, and I know they will be as supportive as everybody else has been for our other offerings at CTEC. So very, very excited for that. Thank you, and thank all of you that work with our children.
Mr. Summerscales, I guess it's really true that it does take a village to raise a child, and I believe our public education is at the center of that village and the heart of it, and thank you for all you do, every day, all the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chef Cohen's done it again. Thank you very much. We now have time for delegations, and before we have one person that has signed up to speak, before that, I will read my little thing here. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding Culpeper County Public Schools. There will be no action taken by the board at this meeting, and such items will be referred to the appropriate administrators for future information and research. Personalities and behaviors of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. Each speaker shall limit his or her remarks to three minutes. No speaker shall be permitted to allocate any portion of his or her speaking time to another speaker. No speaker may address the board more than once per meeting. Delegations wishing to address the board are requested to sign in prior to the meeting with their name, address, and topic. A sheet for this purpose is provided at the entrance. We have one person who would like to speak this evening. Mrs. Sheets?
So first of all, let me begin by complimenting each of you on the board, and perhaps in the audience, who spoke at the candidate forum last week. I applaud your willingness to serve your community and participate in the democratic process, and I greatly admire your public speaking abilities. So what I'm holding here in my hands is a flyer from the Virginia Department of Forestry asking the public to collect acorns and nuts to grow seedlings. It's a great activity. I received this flyer on Monday, shared it with a friend on Tuesday, who presented it to her homeschool co-op on Thursday. It has since been reported back to me that several homeschool families have already participated in the Virginia Department of Forestry's nut and acorn collection activity. I asked myself why new ideas and educational opportunities can't move through the public school system this quickly, and then I remembered. It's those darn standards of learning that bind everyone to a specific timetable required to teach and test specific standards. At the candidates' forum last week, there was much discussion about the mental health issues facing our youth and community members. I have a simple solution that would greatly relieve many of these stresses and mental health issues that were addressed in the forum. I suggest ending all standardized testing, except for classes where credits are needed for graduation. Keep the standards, eliminate the unnecessary test. Eliminating the test allows more time for teaching, with less stress and test anxiety for students, families, and school personnel. Before standardized tests became a requirement, they were end-of-the-year tests, which did not require extensive preparation and memorization. Students still learned under that archaic system. I know some of you feel like I do regarding the over-testing of our students. As a school board member, your hands are tied in many ways by the Virginia Department of Education. However, eliminating unnecessary standardized tests is a simple idea that could have far-reaching, positive effects for Virginia public schools. Every idea starts somewhere. I recently submitted my ideas to Delegate Freitas, who serves on the Education Committee in the Virginia House of Delegates. I encourage anyone listening tonight who believes that eliminating unnecessary testing would benefit the health and well-being of our students, their families, and school personnel, write their state senator, their House of Delegate Member, and to the Virginia Department of Education.
We are now doing our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items listed under the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to recognize American Education Week, and I'm going to read that to you. The resolution: Whereas public schools are the backbone of our constitutional republic, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's previous values of freedom, civility, and equality; and whereas by equipping the young people of Culpeper and the nation with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, our public schools give them hope for and access to a productive future; and whereas school employees, be they custodians or teachers, bus drivers or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and the entire Culpeper County community with care and professionalism; and whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in common enterprise. Now therefore be it resolved that the Culpeper County School Board unanimously declares the week of November thirteenth through seventeenth to be American Education Week in Culpeper County, and be it further resolved that the Culpeper County School Board urges that community members observe this week by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of professionals who work in our public schools. Adopted this ninth day of October, 2023. Is there a motion to accept the resolution? So moved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution carries. Our next item is the approval of the 2023-2024 Gifted Advisory Council members. I'm assuming that all members have seen the list. Is there a motion to accept the list?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The list is approved. Our next item on the agenda, Dr. Bradz is going to speak to us first. Tell us a little bit more about the information about this item on the agenda. Dr. Bradz?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I thought it'd be best I present from this direction, so if you have questions, we're not looking around each other. But before I do that, fantastic presentation on career and technical education programs in Culpeper County, and also the offerings at our not-so-new, but relatively new CTEC. A number of teachers, staff members, came out this evening in support. I'd like for them just to stand up and so we can say thank you to them one more time. So please stand. Please stand. Come on, come on. Come on up and say a few words. I'm kidding. I was getting the look just for that. Okay. So there's a resolution on the screen that we're introducing for this conversation, of this action item right now, so kind of hold on to that. That's in your packet. At this time, if you'll go to the map image, Jameson. Not that one. Not that one. I don't see it. The color one? So while we're finding the correct image, not exactly like Christmas, but when you find out you own something that you didn't know you owned literally less than a week ago. And all of this is happening because our town government and our county government is working very closely with a company called People, Inc., and their role at People, Inc. is to develop and construct and offer affordable housing. So there's affordable housing projects that both the county and the town are collaborating on in the town of Culpeper. So far, so good, doesn't involve us. Hmm, not exactly. Everything is moving forward, everything is moving smoothly. At the eleventh hour, with documents at the ready, they discovered a slight problem. I'm not sure if my pointer will go to the back. Does it go to the back of the room, or no? It does not. The highlighted area in purple there is owned by the school board. The school board received this as a transfer from the town of Culpeper in 1963, and I know everybody here knew about that. No, none of us knew about this, and it was discovered when they were doing the deed and title search for this property. So why is that? Because, why are we having this conversation? The two triangles there, outlined in purple, and then the one that's just the land in green, side by side, that's the town component of what the town is contributing to this project. And over to the right of that, as I look at it, so the right on the screen, and I'll go here, back here for you, this area, that's where the light-foot properties and the affordable housing units will be constructed. That is about four and a half acres, 4.4 acres, that the county owns in town. It's a little convoluted, but the county is donating that land, the town was donating their land. At the eleventh hour, as I said before, they realized that it's not the town's land to donate. It belongs to the school board. So what do we do? Well, what we can do is, because any property that we have that we would declare surplus to the needs of the school division, we can call it surplus, and if we do call it surplus, Code of Virginia says we call it surplus and give it back to guess who? The county. And I guess it's very safe to say we can call it surplus when we didn't know we had it in the first place. So it's not something that we need, it's not something that we could use educationally, and it's something that would help our partners at the county and at the town move forward with this community affordable housing project. So all of that said, and I do apologize for the short notice, but this came upon us very suddenly. I appreciate your patience with me on that, but all the documents, as Ms. Jameson was showing you some of the images of what the renderings of what the plot would look like, that's all involved with this property transfer. So what the resolution is asking the board to do is to authorize the chair and the superintendent to sign off on the necessary paperwork to commence with the deed of transfer, of transferring this property, point four-four-something acres, back to the county, and the county will therefore transfer it to People, Inc. So that will mean they will be transferring their 4.4 acres plus this point-four-acre parcel. So, having said all that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. And if I need another visual back there, my lovely assistant will help me put something on the screen to try to help me explain this situation. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Ms. Desalee?
Just one. I don't have any problem with approving it. I'm just curious, when we found out about this, do we also know why or what purpose it was supposed to be for that was given to the school board at that time back in the sixties?
You have in your packet the deed of exchange where the town gave it to the county. At the time, over in that area, was the original AG Richardson. And I suspect that it was close enough to AG, and the town at the time didn't have use for it, said, well, let's just give it to the school board in the case the school board needs it, or somehow that can help with the previous AG Richardson school. That's the only thing that we collectively can come up with, is why the town gave it to the school board in the first place. That is unusual. Well, and I must say, the town didn't, in full disclosure, the town didn't give it to the school board. We purchased it from the town. That's in the deed of transfer.
Any other questions?
It's a fun story. It's a great story.
It's a long time ago.
So we didn't pay any taxes on this or anything?
No. That's why we wouldn't know. We're tax-exempt, so we wouldn't. This never came up on a tax ticket. And also, it's incorrectly labeled in GIS. So you go to GIS right now, that screen that was up earlier, it shows as town property. But upon doing the deed search in the courthouse, not so fast, technology was wrong in that it wasn't up to date to what happened. Now, maybe 1963 technology and 2023 technology, you know, we're talking sixty years ago that the school board purchased this for... the school board purchased this for $7,500. It's an interesting story. But we're happy to, if the board is, pleasure of the board, happy to have you clear it surplus so that we can have the parcel go to the county, and then the county can take action and give it to People Inc. That's the story. And I'm sticking to it.
I'm just really glad you weren't, I mean, I was sitting there going, we cannot put a school on that little piece of land. What does he think? Yeah, so.
Everybody has a sense of where it is, correct? From the, okay, okay.
But Dr. Bradz, right now, we're the owner. And if somebody went on that surplus piece of land and broke their neck, are we liable at this moment?
I think maybe technically, but I think Mr. Shoma would say we don't have that, we don't have insurance on that property, so.
But we own it.
We would.
So we better not.
We, it's in our best interest to unload it, yes. Again, we didn't know we owned it. That's kind of a rare thing in the real estate world. And I've been told before, I'm not a real estate agent. Correct, Mr. Shoma? Okay, I'm close. Okay. Any further questions? Thank you. And Ms. Baker, if the resolution.
Do you want the resolution read aloud?
If that's suited up to the board. It's an action item.
Pleasure of the board. Okay. Here is the resolution of School Board of the County of Culpeper, Virginia. Whereas Culpeper County School Board currently owns real property situated in the town of Culpeper, Virginia, identified on tax map 41A14Y7, acquired from the town of Culpeper via a deed of exchange dated September 27, 1963. And whereas the board has determined that the property is surplus to the needs of the school board. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board declares its right title and interest, if any, in such property surplus pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 22.1-129. And be it further resolved that the chair of the school board and the Division Superintendent of Schools are hereby directed and authorized to execute such documents, including without limitation, resolutions, deeds, affidavits, certificates, and other instruments, and take such actions as are necessary or convenient to convey the title to such property so that the property is declared surplus as to all interest and title transferred to the County of Culpeper, Virginia, adopted and passed this ninth day of October 2023, and executed by the chairman as duly authorized. Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? Ms. Desale, second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We no longer own the land. Okay. Almost, almost. When the papers are signed, we won't. Okay. Up to item D. We need to authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract with Spectrum Design Architects, engineers for architects, and engineering services related to the Culpeper Middle School renovation modernization project subject to final review by legal counsel. Is there a motion to authorize?
So moved.
Second. Are there any debate? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Superintendent's report. Dr. Bradz is going to do an update.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Madam Chairman, members of the board, would like to give you an update on the superintendent's report this month. I didn't have a lot of new information to provide publicly in terms of what's going on. You heard the great update from CTE that we anticipated. But also, because in light of what transpired last week, I thought it was probably a good time to give you an update on our efforts with trying to secure some of the funding for one of the governor's initiatives for lab schools. And we've talked about this back in the retreat in November and the process. Our group was fortunate to receive a planning grant of $200,000 to have a project manager and a grant manager work through the process. I'm going to go through these slides very quickly. This is in the public domain now, as it was presented last Tuesday in Richmond to the Standing Committee of the State Board of Education for lab schools. So very pleased to report that, I'll go ahead and put it out here now, we were, was high praise given to our proposal, that we checked all the boxes. We anticipate coming back in November for the final check with the Standing Committee, and then subsequently we'll go to the State Board of Education for final and full approval in December of this year. So we're very excited about Future Educators Academy. And we talked about that. So happy to answer any question you may have, but I'm gonna go through very quickly because this is the presentation that we did. And I do have to give recognition to Taylor Landry with Germana Community College. She is the grant administrator, or project administrator. Her actual title is a very long one. She's a Special Assistant to the President for Strategic Initiatives. And Ms. Brenda Baird, a retired educator from Laurel Ridge, previously Lord Fairfax, kind of hard to say that. We know this individual for great work with our governor's school. We reached out to her, got her off the bench, so to speak, and she's been fantastic and rejuvenated in terms of helping us with this project because it's a huge component to working with secondary students and post-secondary opportunities. So, and she has a tremendous amount of background with that. And last week, Dr. Gullickson and myself, we went down and spoke on behalf of the college presidents and the superintendents that are involved in the first blush. And when you see the slides that I'm going to show you very quickly, think that the school divisions that participated, their instructional teams, Mr. Hallman back here, lots of folks, helped with putting all this together over the last several, several months in order to submit the application, which we submitted in July of this year. And so we were just this October, well, October, going to present our application. So very excited about that. Run through quickly, maybe, maybe not. Here we go. There we go. We talked about this. I'm not going to elaborate on the slides. The point of this is to grow your own. We do this with Teach For Tomorrow, we do this for some of our other programs. We have programs where our students can get college credit to include, but not limited to, they graduate with an associate's degree with us. It can be done. But we wanted to look at that lab school money and say, can we do this a little differently? Have that major be an associate's degree in education, and then have four-year partners that will partner with us, that these students can do two plus two, or teach in two, or however you want to say it, and come back to the participating divisions and owe us some time rather than money. So we're very excited about it. That's the gist of it. The secondary schools participating initially in our first year, which will be next fall, if we are approved in November with the next phase, and then ultimately with the Board of Education in December. We hope to do our marketing and get this out there for our registration and our program of studies early enough that we can recruit students to understand what this is about, and this is a commitment. So the first year will be next school year. Am I saying that right? Twenty-four, twenty-five? Yes, I'm saying that right? And the first four school divisions will be, as we had mentioned, when we first broached this idea with the board, would be Culpeper, Madison, Orange, Rappahannock. And our location will be at Germana, at Daniel Technology Center. And you know that we were leaders in getting this process going. The second iteration of this, the next year, because part of this process is to include another two-year institution, and that's Laurel Ridge as well, and I'll take too much time trying to explain it, but the service area situation and how the community colleges are divided up and the school divisions that they're required to work with is very interesting in the Commonwealth for all the, all 22 community colleges, off the top of my head. Maybe it's, I think that's right. But at any rate, we hope to expand. The intent is to expand that first 24 student cohort from next year, then that will double into 48 because you'll have another class of juniors coming in. And in 2025, 48 plus two more sites with another 24 and 24 is 48. I'll get lost myself in that math, but the intent is to grow. Why? Because we intend to have two campuses with Laurel Ridge, one in Middletown and one in Warrenton. And so our four-year partner right now is rock solid James Madison University because they already have in place their Grow Your Own program, so we will slot our students into their two, three years out. So that's the intent there. But with some other higher ed partners that are very excited about coming on board to include, but not limited to, Shenandoah University and University of Mary Washington. So what does it look like? Let's just take that in for a second. I probably got ahead of myself saying that. There's your transfer articulation agreements. We had to work very closely with both Laurel Ridge and Germana to make sure the courses and the rigor were accurate, that institutions were willing to grant that education associate's degree. And then, in that education associate's degree, because the four years are not fickle at all, are they? Yes, they are. So that that two-year transfer degree would be accepted into their education programs at the four-year. So that work has been done to the extent of amazing because we had to work through all those details to have all that aligned. So there's some details there. We're starting off with 24, I said that. Lot of student supports in place. I'm not going to read all that slide to you, but a component, a real key component, is that in the four participating school divisions that are coming together at Germana, they're going to be taking trips often, both to the four years eventually when that's appropriate, but they're going to go to the school divisions, the participating school divisions, for example, Madison and Orange and Rappahannock and Culpeper, to see model programs and see what they're interested in. So they're going to get that work-based learning with the component of this program that we're very excited about. And again, also the college, the secondary, I'm sorry, the post-secondary opportunity when that arises, when we're further into this. Student commitment, right there, and then a two-year commitment to the sponsoring school division. And also, since we're in it together as a sponsoring school division, if you're a graduate and you're a participant and you come out of Orange and decide you want to end up in Rappahannock, that's fine. You could do your two years in a different school division of the four. And that will expand because the whole notion is that our region, Region Four, needs teachers, right? You've seen the information. You saw the Secretary of Education three weeks ago say that we were down this year compared to last year in terms of unfilled positions. Knock on wood, we're not talking about Culpeper right now, but the need is always there. Okay? So, structure of the school. We'll have a governing board, advisory board, director, normal kind of structure. This is what's pretty interesting. Again, not going to read those, but a lot of work has gone into what does that junior and senior year look like in order to get the associate's degree in education that's going to be transferable with that articulation agreement with the four years. So that has been worked out. And that, for the subcommittee, they were very impressed with that level of detail in this plan. And behind the scenes are our budget requests and all that, and I'm not going to muddy this presentation with that this evening. Again, it depends on if we get funded, but again, they thought we checked all the boxes. Credentials and assessment, they'll take wise literacy, you heard about that on credentialing today, CPR first aid because of teacher licensure, practice math, VCLA, those kinds of things. We're aiming for elementary certification, special education initially. And once a student is initially licensed, then they can take a praxis and teach in a content area if they so desire, and they have the maturity and they want to go to middle and high school, they can. But primarily the focus is going to be elementary, which is still number one or number two in the shortage area for teachers. So that's going to be the focus for these young folks. Experiential learning, I mentioned this earlier, so sorry I got ahead of myself. I'll just take a look at that, and this presentation will remain in your onboard docs. And the mentorship and transitional support, do the FAFSA, all those things of helping a would-be college student that's going to be taking college-level courses in their junior and senior year. And of course, all their other courses for high school graduation. Just a quick slide about how it's funded. Our program somewhat modeled by the governor's school model, but as you know, the governor's school is funded directly to the fiscal agent by the state of Virginia in their funding formula. So if this actually takes off, perhaps it becomes a long-term funding opportunity for school divisions who want to participate in this kind of structure. Because it addresses the teacher shortage, and we really, really believe that this format can be generalizable across the Commonwealth, that you can do your two-year education associate's degree in high school and then get out of there and go to a four-year, public or private, and get that education major. And then you're in the pipeline for teacher shortage. I'm not going to read all that to you, but that's effectively what it says. So this was the presentation we made to the board, and again, they were very pleased with our presentation and said, of all their presentations thus far, ours was, I checked all the boxes, it was the most impressive, I will say, and that's what they told us. So we went away feeling very good that this has a great opportunity to be considered a go next month when we go back down, and then for the full board, State Board of Education to fund us going forward. So I just want to give you that update and progress report. Kind of hard to do that in a other kind of format, so I thought I'd do that this evening. Again, a whole lot of people behind me and working behind the scenes to get this done in terms of this whole process, as you can see, both from our two-year partners and our four-year partners. JMU has been phenomenal in terms of looking at our programs and saying, what about this? What about that? In terms of the expectation of that student coming out of this program in three years. Happy to answer any questions you may have. It's good stuff.
Are there any questions?
It's really exciting.
Ms. Sutches?
Very impressive. And the model for governor's school should, has given you a template, which is wonderful. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, and it certainly looks exciting for the future of new teachers, for us and many other counties. Thank you very much.
Ms. Smith, did you have some?
I just said it's very exciting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bradz.
Gee, hasn't been that cool of a meeting. I think it's going home now. No, we've had a pretty good run, and everything that, you know, gives me greatest of hope of what I saw tonight. I mean, that's been a lot of hard work by you guys and everything coming to, you know, completion. Finance report tonight, we're still... The ADM, we're still lacking a little bit, but the thing is, we seem to be growing a little bit every month, which is good. It's not going the other direction, but we are growing. So that's a good thing. So we're about 96 students off the budget, and it's not a real big concern now, like I said, because we keep growing where we are. Right now, we are tracking this budget, but the big bully in the room is the state revenue number. And right now, they have yet to put a cap tool on the, for the school divisions, and we were expecting one, and I checked it today and it's still not there. And that's about $72 million of our budget at revenue number at 64%. So we're still kind of in a semi-holding pattern for where the revenues go, and we're accounting on the state funds to show up. And the budget expenditures, that's pretty much firm. We are following this plan, and right now, we're kind of on pace with that. As you can see, we went into this two months now, and we're spending about 8% a month, which is a normal month, and that was what was last year. This past August, the same thing here is 8%. So the expenditure budget is pretty much going according to plan. I know we'll be surprised... according to plan. No real big surprises there, and we're tracking that. So, right now, we're assuming everything is cohesive with the state, and that we're going to get all this stuff. Also, the other thing that's in there is we're spending down a lot of our ESSA grants right now in the process, and all those grants have really helped with the things that we've got in process and have completed. And it's been a big help for us as a county and as a school division. So that's pretty much it for the finance report. And also, we completed the annual school report last week. We got that in there. It's at the DOE, and it was kind of a chore. It took a lot of different people, a lot of help trying to get that completed. It's over about a hundred and twenty pages now, a document, and it's almost like a giant tax return for a corporation. So, guys submitted, I keep my fingers there, I want to go in and check the emails, make sure they don't have something nasty from the state. But so far, so good. So, a lot's happened, a lot of good stuff. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shomo. Dr. O'Brien, operations?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Bradz, I'm happy to give the operations report for this month for our going into October. First, facilities and maintenance. First, this is that CMS brick ledge repair. You know, we did the roof at CMS, and that's been completed. And there's a little bit of an area that you could kind of see, it's kind of grunky along the edge. Grunky is my word for it, but there's a lot of mold and moss that's growing, and it actually pulled some of the bricks loose. So we were concerned about water actually working its way down underneath that brick and then under the brand-new roofing. So part of the solution that we did in the change order with the roofers is we then added that much more streamlined metal trim that goes on it and have sealed the whole thing up. So it's definitely a better-looking roof along the edges of the gym, and it's certainly going to make sure we have a watertight seal going around that part of the building. And as I mentioned previously, they were working on it, and it's done. The new rooftop unit that's over the main office at CMS has been completed, as well as we replaced a hot water heater at AG Richardson. And that actually came out pretty quick, and is going to help them move more quickly on food preparation and all the things that go with it. We are also working on getting some of our court repairs done at the tennis courts, because a lot of them have cracked or actually even had debris growing and grass growing in them. So what we're doing with ATC is we're cleaning out those cracks and we're resealing them so that they will be ready when tennis season comes around in the spring. We couldn't do anything too extensive because of the weather and the fact that we're getting into winter, so we do have some plans on the future of how to do a more comprehensive repair and rebuild of those courts. And then, we also mounted some signs at AG Richardson that, they actually made the signs, but our staff went in and actually hung them and bolted them up throughout the building. And I know someone asked about this, I think Mr. Burnett did, about getting these signs, these interactive signs up, and we do have them at all of our elementary schools now, out at the playground. And we also had a request about sidewalk repair over by Sycamore Park, and we did get out there and do that repair so that we know that the walking service is safe to walk on. We still have some other areas that we plan to touch up, but we're going to get actual contractors to come out and do some of that work. And we serviced almost a hundred of the bikes that are used by Eastern View, as well as CCHS, and the bike-bus inventory that's on the bike-bus itself. You know, things such as took care of the chains, adjusted the chains, adjusted brakes, replaced some pads and some of that on those bikes as well to make them safe and readily for student use. We did four hundred fifty-two work orders that we completed, and we had four hundred seventy-seven new ones come in. Did the cooling tower float replacement. Of course, the fire marshal came out. We had some inspections with our fats, oils, and grease, and those were all, came out well. And did the rooftop unit install, but I don't have any pictures of that for Farmington yet. Food service, this just gives you a quick rundown that we are up as compared to last year in terms of the number of meals that we have been providing. And the crunch heard around the Commonwealth, I'm sure you've seen some of the flyers and some of the postings that Ms. Hoover did. Our apples did come from Thornton River Orchard, so we tried to source locally as much as possible. And there's some pictures of people enjoying the apples. And then finally, our harvest of the month, the food service that we do is with Ms. Grady, is going to be a granola parfait, which actually looks really good, and I'm sure the kids are going to enjoy that when it comes to AG Richardson and Pearl Sample this month. Technology, you see the number of our, what we call our monthly stats, number of tickets we get, number of phone calls. One of the things that we are looking at again is that EV auditorium system. We've got some quotes on that, that we're working with finance on, and you can see that they're going to something called a Q System Core, which is kind of next level, but at the same time, it's what's needed for that auditorium to be able to connect the lights and the audio and everything the way that it should be. And we are working with Artistic Concepts Group, or ACG, to assist us in that process. Safe schools, our security technician is continuing to do some camera installs. Training of staff is continuing. We also are piloting something called a ceiling tile locking system so that you can no longer push up on ceiling tiles. Instead, we'll be able to lock them down from the top. So if anybody tried to put something into the ceiling, you would now be unable to. Or if you forced it, it would become very evident because it would damage it. We're also continuing our work on the numbering system. There is a grant that Ms. Lane's working on for Title IV Stronger Connections Grant, where we've looked at things that could satisfy, like, some of the schools are asking for an additional gator or vehicle to get around for security purposes, and also some additional cameras. So we're looking at some things that come from that. And we also have completed our security grant request at the VDOE as well. Transportation, last month, we routed six thousand eight hundred and forty-two students. This month, we're at six thousand five hundred and fifty-one. We did a lot of route consolidation, and I know I've talked a lot about Bus 29 in particular, and we've made some really substantial gains on that because we took some of his town students off and put them on a different run that was able to get him out quicker, out into the distant, heading towards Boston. So that improved his last stop that, at the beginning of the year, was close to five, now is about four twenty-five. And in fact, today, I think today was about four twenty-eight that he called in with his last drop. So that's a significant improvement in terms of times. And we're making the same gains out in Richardsville as well. Bus seventeen, for example, is finishing much sooner than he did at the beginning of the year as well. We still struggle with making sure parents are at the stops when we come to drop off. Anytime that happens, that always, you know, delays us sometimes five to ten minutes. Those are some of the things that we've done. We've looked at express shuttles. We did have a meeting with Bluebird Virginia that came up with the idea that they were supposed to present to us a non-CDL vehicle that we could use as an express shuttle to try to alleviate some of those longer runs. Instead, they brought a thirty-passenger bus that would not have satisfied that because you would still have required a CDL to do that. So it's going to be a while before they get vehicles that actually fit the need. So that's not going to be able to assist us this year. And again, we continue to consolidate routes, try to put more, if it's a town run or if it's a country run that's in town, we try to pull those kids off and put them on different routes. We did hire three new bus drivers, which is great, a van driver and an aide. We're doing our pupil transportation reporting with the state, which is going to take a little while, along with some safety review items. In Stop Finder, we have nine hundred and twenty-four active users, which is the highest number that we've had since we've rolled that out. So it's good to see that number starting to tick up, and more and more parents are getting comfortable using it and setting up the geo alerts as part of that. Any questions? I know I went fast.
Are there any questions for Dr. O'Brien?
I just wanted to say-
Go ahead, Ms. Burnett.
Thank you so much, Dr. Donovan, I mean, O'Brien, Donovan O'Brien. These things are amazing, the signs, the locking ceiling tiles, awesome. I'm sure people are going to be very relieved. I was just wondering about your advertising. Are you getting advertising? Look back at a couple of those slides, and I saw the tennis court company.
Yes. I included that just so you know who the contractor is, which is a professional organization that, and I guess they work on a whole lot of tennis courts. So it's not just somebody else, it's actually, you know, it's not something we can do, I guess. So I'm just trying to give credence to that this is a good reputation of a company for us to use.
That's good. I thought maybe they were giving us a kickback maybe for advertising for them, because it just looks so professional.
We could try. Never hurts to ask.
A question about the bike program. Can you tell me a little bit more about the bike program?
What aspect of it? It's bikes that, we have bikes that we take for elementary students, and we travel around on the bike bus. So different schools get it for different times of years. Ms. Wenger, who's our curriculum specialist for health and PE, she kind of coordinates that. And our PE teachers actually teach kids how to ride bikes in a safe environment with helmets and everything else, so they start to get some lessons on how to do it.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions for Dr. O'Brien? Ms. Sutches?
Several. The sidewalks back at Sycamore-
Yes.
I was passed there yesterday, and there is still another-
There is.
-segment that has a really bad crack in it. So, that's to come.
That's to come. We want to use a contractor for that, but I think, talking with our maintenance department, one thing we're going to do is try to, what we call chisel it down, so it's not popping up, so it's a flatter surface, so it's not a trip hazard.
It is definitely a trip hazard at this point. And I know a lot of the teachers, the staff park over in the Floyd T. Benz lot and walk across. So, and then at events, I've seen a lot of parents and students parking over there and coming over there as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I did see the folks working on the tennis courts today when I came by. I was surprised to see how much, how many cracks there are at CCHS. I think that one's in worse shape than EV.
EV has some issues as well in their center court, and we think that water's actually kind of coming up from underneath it. So that's like a little more-
At CC.
At Eastern View.
Oh, CC also has a spring that runs under those courts. It always has. It's always caused problems.
Definitely going to take some work. Absolutely.
Then, when you're taking these students, the town students off of the longer runs, and you're putting them on other buses, that's not causing an overcrowding issue to the town bus that's now?
No, because our advantage is those three new bus drivers.
Okay.
So we're starting to fill routes that we haven't filled in a long time. So by doing that, we're taking stress off the entire system. And we're being strategic about that by pulling those kids off so those long-distance run buses can get-
Can go.
-out further quicker, is the plan. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions? Dr. O'Brien, have people stopped passing our buses when they're stopped with their lights on, and they're still?
Not yet.
Maybe you ought to say, that's a law, isn't it, that you're not supposed to pass a stop bus?
Yeah. And I'll have fresh numbers for you next time with how we are doing in terms of our bus patrol system and our stop-arm cameras.
Thank you, Dr. O'Brien. Maybe they'll hear this, and they'll stop passing our buses. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, Ms. Baker, I will say, if they have passed our buses and the bus stop-arm camera was activated and had an image, they're going to take it as two hundred and fifty dollars.
Merry Christmas.
And that's a lot of incentive to stop passing the bus.
Absolutely.
The obvious incentives for not passing a school bus aside-
It's children.
If you find folks, that sometimes gets their attention. So that's what happens. And we do appreciate the support of law enforcement that helps us with this process. And again, the county attorney and the county attorney, and the Commonwealth attorney that makes this happen for us. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. O'Brien. Okay, board member reports, the comments. Where shall we start this time? Ms. Brown?
Ask me to go first. The only real comments I have is, I too appreciate your comments about Mr. Brunner. We lose people all the time in education, but Mr. Brunner was a unique person. Help a kid no matter what. He was a great role model for new teachers coming in. And I want you to think a second about, he worked thirty-one years in the Army, and then twenty-four, almost twenty-five years in education. The only thing I could come up with is he's like an angel in our midst. And while we will be worse off for him having left us, he has certainly left an indelible mark on this community, and still all our teachers. But this one's kind of a little different with all those years. I'm older, I can't imagine being back in a classroom, and the man was there all the time, helping. He just needs a few minutes from us. So, thank you.
Ms. Sutches?
Don was a good man. Certainly served his country for all those years, and some amazing stories of what he did prior to coming to Culpeper County Public Schools. And he was a good mentor, and he cared for his kids, and he works very hard for all of his kids to succeed. I want to thank all of you all who do what you do every day to make our kids succeed, to help our kids succeed. And I don't think the majority of people understand the countless hours that go in, whether you're in the classroom or whether you're in the administration helping to plan for new programs that provide new opportunities for our kids. I'm very excited about the ELL external ships, externships that may potentially be coming through the, through career partners. I think that's going to be another opportunity for students that we haven't had before. And the Teacher Academy also is excellent. So thank you all very much for what you do.
Ms. Smith?
So my favorite part of school board meetings each month, or each week, yeah, each month, is the school reports. Yeah, it's so much fun, and it's really exciting to see the good things that are going on in our schools. I want to say thank you to Eastern View and CTEC for sharing what exciting things are happening. It's really impressive, and we love to hear that. And when I first got on the board, one of the first conferences I went to, they made a statement, if we don't tell the good news, the good things we're doing, everyone else will make up their own news, and usually, it's not so good. So, I'm super appreciative, and I know you probably get tired of hearing it, but of Ms. Hoover and the reports that she shares on a weekly basis of the good things that are happening. That's not even her main responsibility, but it's a huge benefit for us. And I'm appreciative of our staff and all that they do, and pretty impressive that two lives were saved. How exciting that is. And I mean, there are so many other positive things that happen, but when we have people who know what they're doing and can see that, and we can hear that, I think that's really, really exciting. So, I just want to say thank you to our staff once again, as I always do. And I also want to say thank you to our parents who are willing to share, reach out to us and share with us, and our constituents, share with us their, I'll borrow Mr. Bradz's comment, their joys and concerns. We appreciate you and we value you, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Luckenfield? Ms. Desalee? Ms. Burnett?
I just wanted to say thank you all for everything that you do. Eastern View, CTEC, amazing. And parents, please feel welcome to reach out to any of us at any time. That's why we're here. We love to hear from you. We love the community involvement and spirit of this community because it takes us all to make school happen. And we greatly appreciate everyone pitching in and, you know, helping us with that task. Thank you so much.
Whoops. Thank you, Ms. Burnett. We'll move on to our information items. We have a summary of the CCSB committee, our school board committee reports are in board docs, and our membership is in board docs, as well as the Transportation Department Appreciation Week, which will be October sixteenth- Appreciation Week, which will be October 16th through 20th. That's a really important one. Let's not forget our transportation, our bus drivers and our bus aides. And we all know that November 13th through 17th is American Education Week, as well as Appreciation Week for our substitutes. Our future meeting dates are listed. Capital planning, October 11th, Administrative Committee, October 17th, Business Work Session is October 23rd, Finance Committee meeting November 13th, and our Regular Board meeting November 13th. There is a need to go into closed session, so if Ms. Smith would lead us into closed session.
Yes, make a motion that the school board convene a closed session at 7:30 PM to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The appointment of classified personnel, the transfer of classified personnel, the separation of certified personnel, the separation of classified personnel, the approval of an instructional supplement for the 23-24 school year, the separation of an instructional supplement for the 23-24 school year, the approval of the 23-24 amended fall coaching supplements for CCHS and CMS, the approval of 23-24 winter coaching supplements for CCHS, EVHS, CMS, and FTBMS, and the discussion of student matters related to named students a religious exemption as permitted by the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A2.
Second.
Elizabeth, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and we're about to go into closed session with a five-minute recess.